So just to let everybody know, the meeting is being recorded by Norton Media. If anybody else is recording, please just let us know. And we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the good soul with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the minutes from the last, from the May 21st meeting. Did everyone have a chance to look at them?
Yes.
Any questions, comments? Is there a motion? To approve them?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the warrant update. I reviewed and approved warrants that were presented to me at the May 21st School Committee Meeting. The total amount approved was 175,193 and 8 cents. I wish to enter this into the information into the public record. Student rep update?
So, last week was seniors' last week, which was really sad. They had class night and then the walk-through through all the schools. That was awesome. I'm sure you saw a lot of pictures online. The field trip to Kennedy Lake Park and then graduation, obviously, was Friday night. And everyone loved it. It was a great ceremony. The Norton Middle School had their play of Mary Poppins. There were two shows for their classmates and then three for the general public. And it was a really great performance. There was field day at the Yale School. A lot of kids from the high school went and volunteered and we had a lot of fun. And there were, obviously, Memorial Day assemblies throughout the whole district. And it was a really great way to honor a lot of local veterans. For the upcoming week, it's Hey Where Seniors Week at Norton High School, which is for the juniors who are now seniors. And that's really, they have like days, like different meetings. The fall sport meeting is this Thursday. The eighth grade trip to New York is this Friday. The Norton High School Presidential Breakfast Award is also this Friday. The Lancer luau for the eighth graders is coming up. And the Lancer Film Festival is tomorrow night at Norton High School. There's a 5:30 red carpet and the 6 o'clock awards.
Great. Thank you for including all of that information. That's nice to hear.
And I can say that the all-night grad party went very well. There were 26 attendees and it went till 5:30, so that was fun.
And next is recognition of the Norton Middle School students for qualifying for the National History Day Finals. Mr. Jack Howley?
Should I go here?
Yeah, sure.
Fine.
It's always great to get a chance to acknowledge Norton students for competing on the national level. And that's what four students at the middle school have been able to do. They won a district contest in Massachusetts and then they won the state contest or finished in the top two in the state contest to qualify for national finals. And I look over at Caroline Daly, who's a past participant in this program, who went to the state finals. So Caroline knows how much work is involved in these projects. Going to nationals is especially interesting with these four because I think I can say with close to confidence, 100% confidence, none of them are going to be historians. They're great history students and great students in general, but they apply themselves to this project. I think their interest lie in the arts and medicine and psychology and many, many other areas. Now Sophie might be an exception because it's in her blood, but not sure. Could be a historian there. But when you do these projects, I think it's important to note, there's tons of things that middle school students don't typically do in these projects. So they're researching primary sources. They're interviewing experts. They're doing in-depth analysis. They're editing film and sequencing it. They're designing multi-page websites. They're annotating, doing multi-page annotated bibliographies and they're revising and revising and revising and revising to the point they can get very frustrated. But ultimately, all of these students work their way through and achieve tremendous success. These projects develop critical thinking skills and, in my opinion, and I think a lot of the students might agree with me, they're college-level projects done by eighth graders. And to achieve on a level where you get to the national finals is especially noteworthy. And I'm extremely proud of Isabella, Sophie, and Catherine, and Lilly.
So, thank you to Mr. Howley's work and to the students. We have some certificates of recognition today for our four students. So I'll bring up and just do the general reading that each of these students is receiving a certificate for outstanding performance at the National History Day competition, signed by me on this day, the 4th of June. And our first student that we're recognizing is Isabella Dumont. Congratulations. John, you can stay right up here. We'll do pictures. And Sophie Duimore. And last but not least, Lilly McKay. Congratulations. Let's take, get you guys together. We'll do a little picture.
Can you come in front of the podium?
I'll come in front of the podium. Come this way. Nope, I'm definitely closer. Thank you so much. Congratulations.
Any comments? Girls should be...
Do you find out what they did?
Very.
What were the projects? Mr. Howley, you still here? Is he still here?
Yes.
We have a question.
Yes.
Any specifics on what they actually did?
Absolutely. I'll answer those questions.
You don't just come in and get an award.
Um, there was a website done by Isabella and Lilly on Deborah Sampson, a woman who disguised herself as a man to fight in the American Revolution. Multi-page website. They won first place twice. And Sophie and Catherine did a film on the very important Supreme Court case Buck versus Bell. And they were able to also qualify for national finals. And tremendous amount of work for both projects. They've been working on them since the fall. So basically, probably five, six, seven months of work on these and lots of revision. And when they won a prize at district level, they didn't just turn it in again. They basically reworked their projects to be able to be good enough to win at states. And they go to nationals and they've been continuing to work on their projects to try to win something at nationals, which is not out of the question.
Awesome. Thank you for your work as well.
When are you going to go to nationals?
We're going this coming weekend, June 10th. There's a big bus of Massachusetts people going down. And we'll be there through June 14th. It's at the University of Maryland. It's the second year in a row we've went. I wanted to focus on this year's kids, but we were in it for 10 years and never had the chance to qualify. In the last two years, we've done very well. We had two students last year make it and four this year. So we're on the upswing and hopefully we'll be able to go frequently to nationals. But yeah, it's a great experience for the kids to be on the University of Maryland campus. I can't imagine how excited it would have been as an eighth grader to be on college campus. And a lot of these kids are very focused on that experience and their near future. And to be there and walk in that area is just really a tremendous experience for them.
That's great. Thanks, John. Congratulations. Thank you.
Pretty soon you guys, all of us join just like me, studying the history of the town.
All right, next we're going to go to discussion and vote on distribution of school choice funds. Mr. Lynch.
Yep, there's a memo in your packet. It shows our projected revenue coming in for school choice students for next year and what we are bringing forward to the amount that we're looking to spend next year out of those choice funds. It's really all things that we cut from our operating budget that we're looking to cover with choice funds. The big one is 211,622 in technology leases, Chromebooks, iPads, textbooks for 98,000, professional development 25,000, curriculum expenses, that's spelled wrong, 25,000, and technology expenses for 35,000. Totaling 394,622.
Any?
Oh, and a motion. A motion and a vote, excuse me.
Any?
I would like, yeah, so I would like to separate these, and Joe's going to know exactly what I'm doing. I'd like to separate these into technology leases by themselves and then the other items if possible.
So two votes?
Yeah. Okay. So I would, I would motion to approve using school choice funds for technology leases, 211,622.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right. Next motion?
I would motion to approve the following expenses from school choice funds. Textbooks, 98,000, professional development, 25,000, curriculum expenses, 25,000, and technology expenses, 35,000.
Second. All those in favor? Aye.
All those opposed? Operational expense.
Oh, did you? Okay. Gotcha, sorry.
So it's 4-1 on both?
Yeah, 4-1.
You made the motion and then you voted no against the motion.
I know, right? That's why I originally said...
That's a rigid motion. Mr. Sebastian.
I should have caught on to that. Was it 4-1 on both or 4-1 on just the second? Did you vote against the...
I voted for the first one.
Right.
So it's 5-0.
Correct.
5-0 on the lease.
You voted against the technology leases?
No. 5-1, 4-1.
Oh, okay. I thought you said 4-1.
That other amount's 183,000. Just so you know.
183,000?
Yep.
Sorry, Dennis.
No, it's okay. I mean, it's just, it's, I understand the rationale behind it. I don't disagree. We need it. At the same time, it doesn't matter of principle. I will...
Right. Got it. All right, discussion on class size policy?
So, when we went through Kathleen, myself, and Jen, the policy revisions, one of the things that stuck out to me was the lack of, if you will, oomph on the class size section. Of course, we always have to have an out. But the fact is, it's just, it's very blah language, in my opinion, by saying that the superintendent will work with principals to establish classroom enrollment with each teacher and determine the size of the various classes. The administration will consider the following factors: the type of load that will be up the teacher to be most effective with children in the class; the experience of the teacher and familiarity with the school systems programs and policies; and three, the required preparation and correction time for the particular class. Couple of different things that stand out for me is that, you know, we do have a, we try to balance our classes as much as we can. We don't have, you know, a third grade class with 29 because they're a more experienced teacher and a classroom with 18 because they're a less experienced teacher and so forth. So there are a lot of school systems that, in particular in K-2, kindergarten through grade two, some through grade three, some in K-5, some just K-1. That's kind of what I see and I'll defer to Jen from her experience, is that there's a better attempt to try to keep those class sizes down because, to be quite honest, the national research on K-1 is that that's where the most significant research is on in terms of the impact of class size. That, you know, that research shows that in K-1, the smaller the class size is, the better the outcomes, if you will. And, you know, we try to practice that, but there's no guarantee of practicing that, number one. Number two, right now, as you know by some of our class sizes going up, we're going to have higher class sizes now lower, including in K-1. And we've had as much as 24 in K since I've been here anyways. So one of the questions for the school committee is, do we want to look at this class size and give ourselves a little bit more of an understanding of what my assignment to the principal should be, which is, yeah, we are going to concentrate on certain grade levels in certain ways more than we do in others. Now, the catch-22 of that is that if you don't mandate it, then we all know that you are going to have the responsibility, that if there is no money, to shift from the higher, from the higher grades to the lower grades to stick to that new way of doing business. And I don't think that's a good thing unless you give yourself an out because you could be cutting class sizes and, or increasing class sizes at the high school level well into the upper twenties and thirties in order to maintain 20 students in a classroom in kindergarten. You know, in the private, in the public sector, there's something called minimum manning in some contracts. This is a little bit like that in that we're saying, no, we really believe that our K-1 classes should not be any higher than whatever the number needs to be. So that's the reason why I brought this forth along with Kathleen and Jen as a way to, do we keep the general language or do we say, within reason, that, you know, we want to see some of these class sizes in the lower grades actually capped, all over the place. But the national research is pretty clear that in K-1, that's an area of impact.
Jen, did you say that you had, at a borough where somebody had a policy that we had read at the meeting?
Taunton has a class size policy. And what they have is, it varies from grade level to grade level. But specifically, it gives a number and then it says plus or minus four when emergency cases arise. And what they found in Taunton is that there's always an emergency case. So that was just one specific district. I think one of the things that we've tried to do, especially at our youngest grade levels, thinking about our kindergarten classrooms, when the kindergarten paraprofessionals were taken out of the classrooms a few years ago, we've tried to keep those kindergarten class sizes at 18 to 20. And of course, it doesn't always work out that way when we look at our enrollment and our staffing numbers. I think the biggest challenge is in the difficult budget here, where you do have to make cuts. You would end up pulling from other grade levels in order to meet those minimum numbers or those maximum numbers in our lowest grade levels. But as Dr. Bia mentioned, K-1, or where the majority of the research lies in regards to the importance of class size, after that, class size matters, but not as much. It really doesn't depend on the method of instruction in regards to differentiate from students.
So one of the concerns that I had is we're spending a lot of time, this morning, two cases, early elementary grades of just real difficult situations. And I'm concerned about having class sizes in K-1 that are 24 and 25 because our kids need more attention in those grade spans. Everything from the ease of transition into kindergarten, which is new to them, to a new building, to new people and all of that for the first time, to the actual students who are having significant behavioral issues within the classroom. And keeping those class sizes smaller really enhances a professional general educator working with students. Again, there's always a concern on the other side because I'm not sitting here trying to say we can increase class sizes somewhere else. What I am saying though is that, you know, our number one plan of attack needs to be considered is that we need to keep these class sizes in that K-1 grade. If we're using research and data and information as best as we can and try not to just say, well, we're going to try to distribute everybody in K to 5 with the same average class size. Creative ways to think about this would be, that's when you use things like school choice. I know Mr. Sebastian don't like that. But if we have school choice and those are bumping some numbers up, do we seriously say, you know what, seven kids are in that grade, we can move some funds in and create another section there by bringing the class sizes down. And it can be very proactive for us, especially in a district that is hovering around 20% special education and we're trying to attack that area of reading and learning and reading and literacy so that students have a better opportunity. Again, this is, I know it's kind of a last-minute discussion with the use of funds, but that could be some way of being more creative, is that we're trying to make sure that we're tackling our earlier grades with appropriate class sizes that will actually, long-term, actually pay off, I'd say. So how the language reads with this, we have to be careful because if we put ourselves into a situation, she just read Taunton's, Jen just read Taunton's, it's wonderful, but if every year there's an emergency, what's the point? So in our case, the point may be that we're allocating a class size somewhere through something like, a cut somewhere else in the budget or the utilization of something like a school choice funds. That's really the only two options that you have. You either take them somewhere else or utilize those funds only for that purpose and no other purposes. Now, that's going to lead to another discussion down the road, which is, at the end of this summer, we'll have a better handle because our enrollment does this during the summer. But really, by next year, we're potentially looking at eliminating school choice in certain grades because those class sizes will get too large. Because I can't, I can't suggest to you that there won't be 10 kids will come in in that grade. So that's, that's something that we're going to have to look at for FY '20 is, where are we? What does our budget look like? We'll probably be making a decision on school choice later in the year, during the budget process than we will earlier in the year. So instead of getting ourselves out there to be promoted and get students to consider us or families to consider us, we may be on the back end again, which I'm not sure that's a good idea. So we're in a little bit of a pickle, but at the same time, we potentially have an out. It's a difficult discussion of an out on how to use those funds. But the research is pretty clear that in K-1, it matters. We don't have the paraprofessional assistance. That's another route to go, is to utilize, you know, halftime type of position by using choice. There's no cost to the town because people wouldn't be getting health benefits. But potentially a three, three-and-a-half hour paraprofessional assistance in kindergarten, for example, and then using the teaching position for grade one only to bring the class size. That's another way that we can, we can potentially look at doing that. All of that, I still think your policy's going to have to, if you decide to change it, either tonight or at the next time that we meet, which we can add this to the next meeting because it's a lot tonight, is, you know, if we need an out, and we need it out, it's upon me and the administration to figure out how tonight, come to you and say, we don't have another choice. These, these class sizes just ballooned all of a sudden. Our kids checked in. Remember, three fiscal years ago, we had 20 students come into the district, all of them to the high school. I don't know if you remember that story. I mean, we were kind of like, okay, and these are all, this is not choice students. This was all move-in students that took place. So just putting that on the table. You don't have to vote on it tonight. I can absolutely bring it back to the, to the table for the next meeting or not. We can kind of just leave the language as is and just consider our options down the road.
Anybody have any thoughts or comments on this?
I'm certainly hesitant to admit to using school choice money for something that may effectively prevent us from getting school choice money. I think there's kind of a weird, you know, a weird circular hell there, if you will. Yeah, I think, I think I'm more inclined to not paint us into a corner. You know, I'm not saying that you can't work with the language and make it so that it allows you those outs, but I think the idea of keeping it fluid is more appealing to me than restrictive. And I'll leave it at that.
Yeah. Similar to the way it's written now?
Yeah. Though, I mean, I don't know if it's...
Well, I think it puts us in a corner if we have a big uptick. I mean, we're not like Taunton that we have money, not in excess, but we don't have that big of a budget that we can move around that many pieces. So I mean, it's, we're really caught between the, you know, Robin Peter to Pay Paul. You know, I mean, we can't, we can't not do anything, but we also can't not do anything.
It's ironic, right?
I think, I think the issue here is that the, if I may, the data is pretty clear and we can absolutely get to some of that data about K-1 and the significance of class size. And we have a, we have a major issue in this district, which is, we need, we need to address general education at a higher level in order to improve our special education situation.
Can I ask, is, is there something in the wording now that prevents you from, from leaning, a preference towards K through two?
No, it, it doesn't. The issue comes down to the emotional decisions of saying, I'm not following what we all agreed we were going to do. What we're saying is, we're going to do it this way. And yes, I guess we could say that the administration has put together a good enough resolve to say that our distribution is going to prioritize K-1 because of what we just all talked about. But that leads to maybe not as much of an understanding within the general population that that's the way that we're running our business. That's what policy becomes important because it's a very clear message that if you're going to change it, then you got to come back to a process, public meetings and all of that before you make that change.
So I think, first of all, I think we should not vote on it. I guess it's not on the agenda, Isabella.
Correct.
I also, I think it would be easier to think this through if we actually saw the wording of this too.
Right.
Because right now, it's kind of theoretical wording.
That's, that's perfect. We'll bring it back to the 18th.
And the good thing now is with this new policy book, we could change this in September. I mean, not that we want to, but it's going to, it's not going to be as hard as this one has been.
Okay.
Thank you.
Lack of a better word, Jen. All right, so next up is vote to a point. Kathleen's starting to sign the district warrants. Yeah, moving up. So do we have a motion?
Motion moved.
Second? All those in favor? Aye. Yeah, Dan, I think you're the backup.
Yep.
You still good with that?
He does, unfortunately. Backup to the backup.
All right, second reading and vote on policy manual, section J, and the first reading on sections K and L. Let's start with J, if that's okay with everybody. And I have another one from I that we need to go back and address. So was there anything in J after the second reading to take a look at again? So tonight I have, thank you, Jen. Tonight I actually have a IGD. It was on the top of your pilot, has the yellow highlight. This is a policy that was already gone through the first and second reading process through section I. However, we found that we needed to add the highlighted section. And the reasoning for that is, in our coordinate curriculum review, one of our findings was that we did not have a district policy that addressed an annual review of our curriculum for bias. So this is something that is mandated by the state. And then we also have to put a process into place where my office works with the building principals and classroom teachers to review our curriculum materials annually. And that also includes our library materials, which Karen and I have had a long conversation about in the elementary library. Media specialists have spent a lot of time this year going through and pulling some of our books off of our shelves that weren't necessarily free of such bias.
As says Karen.
So this is just a first reading of this IGD tonight and we'll come back and do a second reading next week. Does anyone have any comments on this particular policy?
This is mandated by the state?
Yes.
I mean, they can't spend their time finding ways to fund special education and help us out. This is how they're spending their time.
So it is required that we do an annual review of our materials for bias against, you know, gender identity, sex, race, all of the protected classes?
Who decides what's biased, what's not biased?
That's for us to decide as a district.
And our teachers have nothing better to do at this point? This is, they're not busy, right?
None.
Okay. I don't care if it's mandated or not, we're going against this. This is a horrific waste of our time.
I think the way that we need to handle it is that as we're going through our curriculum review cycle, using that as part of the process, okay? Right now, we're engage, we'll be engaging in a new social studies cycle because we have the new standards that are being voted on at the end of the month. So as we're going through our social studies materials, what are we noticing? Are we addressing all of our student populations? So could we maybe do a first reading on I and then we'll do, how about K and J? Anything there? So you know?
I think I just, one thing.
Wow. You're speechless. We'd beat them down after 10 sections.
Fairness, they were pretty fair.
They are.
So what are they doing?
So do we have to vote on I first and then move on? How are we doing the others?
You have to vote, second, you have to...
Each section by section.
Right.
So first, first on an I. Okay. So a motion to accept. Do we have to do just the IGD because we already did? Yes. Okay, so a motion to approve IGD, the curriculum adoption as a first reading? So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Thank you. Now J. This is second reading. Second reading of J. Okay. So a motion to approve the second reading of J, student policy, policies goals?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Now it's the first of K. First of K. Go ahead, Dennis.
All right, so I'm on K-I.
Okay.
Visitors to the schools, visits by parents to several classrooms in a given grade for the purposes of comparing teaching styles to provide a basis for a request for student assignment to a particular teacher are strongly discouraged because the school district's policy of assigning a student to a particular class is the sole responsibility of the building principal in consultation with the staff of that school. If, if the responsibility lies solely with the principal in consultation with the staff,
materials, what are we noticing? Are we addressing all of our student populations? So, could we maybe do a first reading on I, and then we'll do, how about K and J? Anything there?
I, I think I just won.
Wow. You're speechless.
We'd beat them down after 10 sections.
For fairness, they were pretty fair.
They are.
So, what are they doing?
Going, so we have to vote on I first and then move on?
How about we do the others?
Ah, you have to vote, second, you have to...
Each section by section.
Right.
So, first, first on an I.
Okay. So, so a motion to accept. Do I have to do just the IGD because we already did?
Yes.
Okay. So, a motion to approve IGD, the curriculum adoption as a first reading?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Thank you.
All right. Now, J. This is second reading.
Second reading of J.
Okay. So, a motion to approve the second reading of J, student policy, policies goals?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
And now it's the first of K.
First of K.
All right. So, I'm on K-I.
Okay.
Visitors to the schools, visits by parents to several classrooms in a given grade for the purposes of comparing teaching styles to provide a basis for a request for student assignment to a particular teacher are strongly discouraged because the school district's policy of assigning a student to a particular class is the sole responsibility of the building principal in consultation with the staff of that school. If, if the responsibility lies solely with the principal in consultation with the staff, I don't understand why we're allowing parents to go in and visit multiple teachers in the first class. I, I don't think we should be strongly discouraging it. I don't think it should be allowed. I think it's a ridiculous waste of time. And what's, what's the point of that? It's, they're going to go in and say, I want this teacher, that teacher. It's, you can't do it. So, why, why allow it?
It's disruptive.
It's, it's hardly distracting to, to the classroom. There's no benefit at all. And I can make the argument that for some, for some kids, there's a privacy issue. I don't want somebody coming in and looking over my kid's class if they don't have some vested interest in that class itself. It's one thing if your kid is in the class. It's another altogether if you have no interest in that class itself.
I believe, I believe it's in section J that has a policy about parent requests in visiting classrooms as well. And there's a whole process in regards to submitting a letter of interest.
But is that visiting their current class?
Observations. Yes. Visiting their child in the...
I'm, I'm okay with them visiting their current. I'm not okay with them saying, I want to go see all the teachers from fifth grade next year because that's where my kids go. I don't think, I don't think it should be strongly discouraged. I think it should be not allowed. It is simply not allowed. I don't, I don't know why we're lying now.
I don't know that it really happens, quite honestly, that I know of.
So, here's, so there's a couple of things. The first thing is that under an observation of your child's classroom teacher, you as a parent, regardless of an IEP or non-IEP student, you can do that. You can file, go through that process.
And I have no problem.
However, I would, I would highly suggest that there are some significant language here issues because I can't think of a case in my 26 years where something like this was actually allowed because you don't have the right to be observing other students or other teachers.
Take it out. Why are we strongly discouraging it? Just say it's not allowed.
Well, we'll check with legal, with MASC. The cross-reference here, though, the cross-reference is the, the cross-reference on this is a IHBAA, which is Observation and Special Education Programs. So...
Okay. So, the way that this reads, "School committee welcomes parents and guests to visit classrooms." So, you're telling me somebody who is not even a parent of a student in the school, says, hey, I want to go in, I want to sit in on all the classrooms. I want to see how the teachers are teaching. I'm not okay with that. I don't think we should allow it.
Is this related to a, a special education advocate or something? I mean...
Well, again, observations of a, of your child through a third party that you as a parent request can be done. But the actual quote, compare and contrast, Mr. Savas, the English teacher, to Mrs. Stern, the English teacher in eighth grade, that's not something we do. So...
Yeah. I think we're looking at two different points of view here. Because I'm with Mr. Savas. I mean, you can't teach your shop. It's just...
No.
But, you know, having, having a child that was on a district, we had an advocate come in.
Right.
They had to observe to make sure that you're getting what you need.
Right.
And that, and if it's a current class, I have no issue with that.
We also have families that come in, if they're coming back from the charter, if they're moving from another community, they like to come in, they like to visit the schools, they like to see classrooms before they're enrolling their child. We also have cases where a student may have a friend that maybe goes to Fean or, or Severian, and they want to come to Norton High School and shadow their friend for the day, to see if they've come back.
But that's a student, that's a student.
But that number five actually addresses that issue.
So, here's what we could do. So, if, if the consensus of the committee is that this whole idea of, of supporting this is not, it's not, it needs to be very cut and dry that we're not in this process, and that's legal. And we'll bring it back to you as that language, if that's the consensus. If it's not legal, then we'll ask why, under what statute is this being allowed? Because the statute isn't here except for an observation. And this is called a visit, not an observation. This is, this is, as you said, shopping, which is not something we do. And actually, something that very early on in my career here, I stopped at our schools because we now actually send our schedules out later. We, of course, accept information from parents, relationships that aren't working between students, legal ones or just neighborhood ones or whatever. But the days of, you know, because my eldest had that teacher, I also want my daughter to have that teacher. Well, that's just the luck of the draw and not because we're making it happen. Okay. So, we'll bring it back. So, it's K.
Yes.
K. Any discussion on L? Nothing? Do you want to take a vote?
L was our, L was our last second reading.
Yeah, just second reading.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So, personnel updates, FY19 staffing, that's the man.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Just want to paint a little bit of a picture of some significant personnel changes that are happening. As of, actually, an update that I just gave you, we have a total of 10 resignations that have come in. Two of them, Ted Curley, VAD, and Lincoln Lynch School Business Manager, we kind of internally knew about because of decisions. But the following staff have resigned. Elizabeth Ackerman, high school English teacher, who joined us in 2014. Julie Woodrow, English teacher at the high school, joined us in 2010. Bridget Conley, Conley, Norton High School Guidance Council, joined us in 2010. Patricia Mahoney, a .6 math teacher at Norton High School, joined us in 15. Jacqueline Pigeon Martinez, Norton High School Science Teacher, joined us in 2012. Wendy Rockney, an English teacher at Norton High School, who joined us in 2003. And Joanna Whistler, a science teacher at Norton High School, joined us in 2011. Have all provided us with their intent to resign and have accepted, in some cases, a job elsewhere and, and in some cases, not returning. And the last name is Caitlin Green, which actually happened yesterday. And that's why you got an updated version from me. And she's been with us since 2010. She, she should be, she has...
So, she's not coming back?
Yeah. She has not come back from maternity leave and is now a resignation. There's been no changes to the retirement, except in my office, Sheila Anderson, the coordinator of HR and payroll, is retiring June 30th.
July 30th.
Excuse me, July 30th, thank you. And her position will also be filled. The layoffs and rifts, you've all received those as well. And those are a combination of literally budget layoffs, plus we've also added to that language on the second page, FTE changes, where we cut back on certain teachers because of schedule needs, because of changes that we're making. And then we have the leaves of absences that are noted up above. So, we have a total FTE of 9.9 education, 9.8 educational positions not being filled, and 19 food services personnel as of, of your vote, for a total FTE loss of 28.98 positions to the school department.
So, Caitlin Green, she'll have to be filled, right?
Correct. So, the positions that will need to be filled will be all of the ones that I mentioned, except for the .6 math teacher at the high school. And Miss Rockney's full-time position will only be filled at halftime for a cut of 1.1. And then the, the music position in the elementary school will only be filled as a .89 instead of a 1.0. And we're moving to bring powers in as part-time employees instead of full-time employees. That saves us another .11 FTE. The layoffs at 7.4 added to that. And then, the second page, you have a Norton Middle School ELA position not being filled for another cut for a person that's a leave of absence. We'll have to worry about that the following year because this person, if they come back, has the right to that position. And we also have an art teacher at the high school, social studies at the middle school, and science at the middle school that are all taking a leave of absence. And then, we have the remaining that's on there in terms of FTE.
And we're not filling it?
Sorry?
Those are the long-term subs.
We're not filling it?
No. Leaves of absences that are not being filled are going to be the NMS ELA teacher. On the far right says not filled.
Yeah.
But the other people who are long-term, you know...
So, those will be long-term subs that are, so, in other words, Smith Champagne at the high school, she has the right to that job in FY20. So, she's only filled, backfilled as a long-term sub for the year.
Okay.
Now, with long-term subs, are they eligible for benefits?
Yes. Yeah. Long-term subs are, are, and to be quite honest, after a certain number of days of employment, they are under federal law. So, it's all a matter of need and want and so on and so forth. In this particular case, the answer is yes. They're not treated as using, if you're, if you're a long-term sub, you're not treated as a union employee. You get, I believe it's two personal days, seven sick days, and you're either at B1 or an M1. So, you can have a master's and, you can have a doctorate, and the highest amount I can pay you is master's step one. We did that a few years ago as a way to try to find candidates. We couldn't, nobody's going to work for a full year at $80 a day with all the full teacher responsibilities. So, based on your budget vote of two weeks ago, this is what it's adding up to now. I'm very concerned about what's happening at the high school. This is a significant, a number of teachers at the high school. And the concern is that this is what worries me as a superintendent long-term in terms of, I've asked to see people, I've extended myself to an exit interview. I'd like to know a little bit more about why you're leaving. Is it, is it the makeup of our finances and concern for where I'm going to be because I'm low man on the pole? I know that's a factual tone here. Is it, I need to go on and go through something else with my career, decide to get out of teaching? I know that one of the people on this list is that. Or are there other issues around school culture and climate that I need to know more about and want to investigate more about? And opportunities, Link, Link is a perfect example of, thanks for letting you train us, let me train you, and I can go on to other things.
It's been a good four years.
Hey, it's been a good ride. It's not over yet. And I've been working until hell has hit you thirty.
Twenty more months.
Twenty more days without countdown. So, this is the longest list I've had since I've been here at this time of the year. It's not even close. Not, not even close.
I think this is off, all the years added up.
Uh, in my time here, I would say so, yes. And what's very interesting to me with, with this list is that we have to try to make sure that we have a plan that where we have resignations, we're getting the best candidates that we can find. Well, guess what? It's June 4th, folks. So, this, this is late. So, we're going to be, we're going to be doing postings. The postings internally are actually going to say why. So, it is going to say 1.0 and 3.0, English teachers at the high school parentheses resignations, so that people don't believe these are new positions. Because internally, I'm going to have that problem, never mind externally. And I will also communicate all of this in writing to the finance committee for the first time since I've been here. It's just like I did last year in the fall when there was some rumblings about 33 new positions. This is how it's going to type out, who, when, why, filled, not filled, so that everybody is speaking oranges to oranges and not trying to come up with other situations. One of the questions that I'm already getting is that based on resignations, is there potential to save money? Yeah, there's a potential to save money. There's also a potential to cost us money, specifically in the areas of the math and sciences. That's always a concern. So, we always try to find the best candidate for the position, not just hire a first-year teacher, because that also makes the reputation of district, district more powerful, that you're hiring the best people and that you're trying to get people from other districts to come here to backfill and not just young kids out of college, first-year teachers. Although, that's fine too, if they're the right candidate. That's it.
Any other discussion on this?
I don't have to say anymore.
Yeah, there's really nothing to say. It's, it's sad and it's, yeah.
I'll be releasing this to the staff tomorrow as well.
Does anybody have anything under other?
I do.
All right.
Go ahead.
I, I really want to thank our middle school staff that's been involved with the Mary Poppins show. So, I'm going to speak as your superintendent for a second, just to say that I've been doing these shows, coming, visiting, watching them for five years. Every show every year has been great. But this year, there was a pickup of a notch here. We, we went to another level. And so, that's, that's the good part of being the superintendent. The bad part of the superintendent is how do I continue this in my high school? How do I get this flavor and love of the arts over, I don't ca, I don't even know how many kids are on this list. But how do we get this continuation of that and move it into our high school, where we have kids who we know love the theater arts and want to be in the background, building sets, or just singing, or just being the extra hand and not having the lead. But as a team, there's a place for them to go three to five days out of the week. My other hat is I'm also a father of a child who participated in this. And it was just really great to see how the kids act with each other, right? And in particular, what was awesome for me was how professional the show was. It was professional. It was, I mean, and we don't have the right equipment and the right stuff. Imagine if we did with the teachers that have been involved with this. And so, kudos to our students for taking all of that time away. I can tell you that I did some drives for half an hour one way and the other way a few times. But on the other side, to our staff for putting in the amount of time and effort that they have for a really rinky-dinky little stipend that when you add up all the hours, we're not even paying for their gas for that week. And I just want to recognize that and the work. I'm always been, again, I've always thought it was awesome, but this year, I just really thought like, okay, how can this superintendent, this school committee, our team, how can we kick this up a notch for our kids, right? And get them the better mics and the better sound system and, and, and some money to buy the next set of costumes instead of doing all the stuff that, that we do. So, kudos to the directors, kudos to everybody involved.
I'll just add that the main cast is going to Wingate on Thursday afternoon to visit the senior population there and perform. So, they're very excited to do that.
I got to say, so, fair disclosure, I have a daughter in the show. And if I'm being completely honest, I went to the show hesitantly thinking it's probably going to be a little schmaltzy, not that great. It was phenomenal. And I tell you, the, the cast, talented. There are some talented kids. I was impressed by the singing, I got to tell you. And like you said, the production value, phenomenal, absolutely fantastic. The, with whatever shoestring budget they had, they did a great job. It was, it was absolutely wonderful to see. Loved the show. Love it.
And it's on YouTube now. So, anybody wants to watch it?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
Thank you to, thank you to our friends at...
Yeah. Does anybody have any other comments on the, the middle school play before I do my other? Nobody has anything else? All right. I just want to take a minute and respond to comments that were made at the last board of select meeting on May 24. I did write it down so that I was able to, you know, put my thoughts together and remember everything that I wanted to say. I want to first start off by saying that I want to be clear that the comments I made at previous school committee meetings were not personal attacks in any way. I made a statement on May 7th that the school budget is not supported. By this, I meant our special education state mandates, which we all understand needs to be obeyed by the town or we will be sued, increased $1,185,138. Our budget allowance only increased by $764,389, which means we are short $420,749. Because of this, we are faced with layoffs, and this is the reason I stated the school budget is not supported. I, on behalf of the school committee, have tried since my appointment two years ago to get the board of selectmen and the school committee to work together for the good of our town. Unfortunately, the request I made by email on April 23rd for a meeting on May 5th was not possible because Mr. Yottis did not respond. Mr. Kimball, Ms. Steele, Mr. Savas, and myself have spent countless hours over the last two years trying to bridge the board of selectmen and school committee. And I know that unless all of us, the town manager, the superintendent, the board of selectmen, and the school committee members are forced, are focused to move in a positive direction for our town, then we are just spinning our wheels. We fully recognize that the school department is a big part of the town, and we need to continue working together for sake of moving our town forward. It was also mentioned at the board of selectmen meeting that town employees were feeling like their jobs were being challenged. We completely understand this, as on the very day of their May 24th meeting, we handed 10 employees their pink slips and had previously cut 19 food service employees. There should be no comparison between town employees and school employees because they are all Town of Norton employees. Lastly, there was also mentioned at the board of selective meeting that years and years ago, the school committee said that there would be layoffs, but that never happened. And that is why the school committee has no credibility. In my opinion, blaming the current administration and school committee for choices made in the past is not productive or helpful. It has been our intention and will continue to be our goal to get the current board of selectmen and school committee boards to change the dialogue of the past and to start to work together in order for Norton to grow into the town we all know that it can be. It is my hope that we can sit down together and have the conversations needed, and we can stop the blame game and the us versus them mentality. Townspeople are looking to us, they're elected officials, town manager and superintendent to lead them in a positive direction. And they deserve for all of us to try our best to think of the current and future needs of the town, set goals, and start to achieve them. Thank you. Any other? Thanks, Peter. I actually just want to add to that, Sherri, that I think that it was clearly evident that as a school committee, we wanted to work collaboratively. And that's why we switched our, I think, very longstanding Monday meetings. You might be able to know better, Dennis, because you've been part of this committee a lot longer than me. But as a parent coming to these meetings often, they have always historically been on a Monday. And we took
historically been on a Monday, and we took a vote, and I don't remember exactly the date, to switch our meetings to Thursday, so that they would align with Board of Selectmen meetings, so that when we had our joint meetings, we could potentially do that easily rather than having the struggle of, well, we meet on Mondays and we meet on Thursdays. So, you know, I think it's really evident that the school department, the school committee has tried to work collaboratively and to bring both of these groups together, so I hope that's what is sort of visible to the public, is those things that are happening. We were at a Selectmen meeting, you know, a month ago. They were here at this meeting, so those comments are just really difficult to, I guess, hear, that, you know, we have kind of created this divide, because I don't think that's what we have done at all. So, just wanted to say that publicly as well.
And in addition to what you said about how we said there would be layoffs and then there weren't, well, as we just saw tonight, we got nine resignations from the high school. Obviously, those positions have to be filled. Maybe they'll get filled at a higher amount than what they're paying now, maybe they'll be filled at a lower amount. If that happens, maybe a job can be saved. Are we supposed to not hire somebody back because we said we weren't gonna hire somebody or we were gonna let somebody go? We have no idea what's gonna happen with resignations and retirements, so if the money does come back, it's not that we found the money or we had it hidden under our bed somewhere or anything like that. It's because you don't know what's coming down the pipe until you have it in your office, signed, and ready to go.
I think it's important, if I may, that in the resignations, all but one teacher in one of those administrative positions had come in after town meeting.
Yeah. Does anybody else have any comments, questions, concerns before we adjourn?
Is this the time for me to speak? I said a couple of questions.
Sure, I think we're kinda changing our, if you wouldn't mind coming up and just stating your name, so that...
Yeah.
I know, sorry. Lucky you, you're the first one.
I know.
No trophy for you, though.
Everybody gets a trophy. I've met most of you before. I'm Lauren Bukowski. I'm the head of the science department for one more month. I'm also a parent of three graduates. My youngest graduated Friday. So, I began in 2004. My oldest son started at the high school in 2011. No, he graduated in 2011, 2007. Wow, that's fast.
I was gonna say, I knew that math.
Yeah. So, I've been there fourteen years. So, I have really, during the time that I've been there, I've really seen so much improve at the high school. And there's been a phrase that's been going through my head, which is, wow, my kids got to go through what I call the golden age at Norton High School. And I'm really worried about what's gonna happen after this. I have no intention of leaving.
I don't want you to leave. I need more of you. You too.
And I know, Dr. Baye, you're aware of this, but I don't know if, you know, everybody understands the full significance, things such as layoffs. So, I have two people in my department that gave their resignation for, like you said, a couple of different reasons. So, fine, we can hire two more science teachers. We're probably not gonna get two science teachers with five and eight years of experience who have their master's degrees, who have the level of education of these two women. One of them worked for fifteen years as a genetics counselor, has his master's, and then opted to teach science at Norton High School. These are the kind of teachers that we're losing. We're also gonna get two new teachers and have no department head, no academic coordinator. And as much as it kills me, I'm gonna have to let them be. I apologize, but there is no way I can step up and do the job I've been doing just to be a good person. And I think most of the academic, I mean, I'm almost in tears up here. Those of you who know me, this is not me. I look at the people that are leaving. You talk about the theater department. Oh, God, it would be so great to bring that expertise and that enthusiasm into the high school. We can't keep somebody there long enough to get a program going, and guess what? Next year, there's not gonna be any arts academic coordinator to coordinate that sort of things. So, while these seven positions are not layoffs, we still have our full-time jobs. We're losing other things besides just the people leaving. We're losing positions, we're losing things that people don't understand yet until it happens, and it's, it makes me really sad. So, I don't really expect a response. I just wanna make sure everybody understands that, you know, there's numbers, but there's a lot of other factors going on here.
I can respond and say that I'm very sad.
I mean, my youngest graduated, so I'm, you know...
I've been a parent for many years, fighting for a lot of years.
Those kids who their only hook to stay in the school system is theater or music or arts, that sort of thing, I mean, there's kids that, that's the thing that keeps them... There are specific teachers who have kept kids in school because they've nurtured those abilities, kids who felt like they weren't part of things. And it's just not gonna be, the feeling is different. The morale, the school climate, it is different. I'm sad that this is all happening at the high school, all those resignations, but I'm not surprised.
I think, I just wanna say too, I completely understand your sadness, and again, I feel it as well. You know, I think back and wonder what the last two overrides, what could we have done? How could we have gotten the word out? You know, there's been a lot of sleepless nights over the decisions that we've had to make here on this committee, and we feel for every single one of you, this isn't how we wanted it. This isn't how we saw it end. And I think that for what you just said, of course, I'll cry again, the kids, I didn't do it at graduation, so... I did not cry at graduation. I think for the kids who struggle, and I see them at class night and at graduation, hugging teachers, that is just, it makes me wish that I was a teacher. You know, that connection that you have. So, I need you to understand and to please, I know that morale is down, but we are not done here. I promise you that. We will continue. Beyond what you see here, this will continue. I love this town. That's why I ran for school committee, 'cause I chose to raise my kids here. I chose to send my kids to Norton schools. I will not stop fighting for the kids of this community. I will not. So, please send that back to your colleagues, and we are not done here.
I agree with you, Ms. McCaskin, Ms. Condon, and I have lived in this town all my life, all thirty-two years, and I love the kids there, and I go to all the sporting events, and I cheer on my Lancers, and I go to class night activities, and their students were hugging the teachers that they loved the most, and I will be back next year, and I will continue to support this town, no matter what.
Thank you, Claire.
Because I...
Does anybody else have any...
I don't know if there's any questions for, thank you for listening.
I have one comment, and I know you kinda hinted at what we're losing. We're losing the leadership within each department, and that's something that we can't put a price on. I mean, none of us got elected to cut teachers' positions or anything like that, you know, to make the quote we've always had. It is what it is. We've done everything in our power that we can do, and I have three kids. My oldest is a year away from graduation, so I'm in the complete opposite of him. And I have one in seventh and one in fourth, and I don't know what they're getting into. I've made Norton my home. I'm not going anywhere. You know, and it's just, we, as Sherri said, we're going to do the best we can with what we're given. And, you know, we're five voices of residents in this town. You know, we need, we need help. You know, I mean, we can only, we're blue in the face through this whole process. We've asked, we've asked, we've hounded, we've done everything in, within our power, and the results are this, twenty-nine positions. We couldn't save twenty-nine positions. And that, as Sherri said, it is endless nights, it is, if we did this, could we do this?
I'm not up here to second-guess what cuts that you chose to make. I'm kind of more here for the bigger picture, the bigger audience, of this is gonna have ripple effects. You know, if, within one classroom, one chemistry classroom, I can't do the same thing with twenty-eight that I can do with twenty-two for safety reasons. An English teacher, an AP English teacher reading essays can't do the same thing with thirty that they can with twenty-four. You know, it just isn't possible. And I hate that. I hate not being able to do my best at something, and I feel like that's what's gonna happen.
Well, I think one thing that I've said all along is, we get quality teachers, they're unbelievable. We don't pay them what other districts pay them. The reason why they stay is for their kids and the camaraderie and the feeling of the school. So, to now hear that things are changing of that feeling is heartbreaking, because unfortunately, I think this is just the beginning.
So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anything else?
So, surprised to hear you have some comments, I guess.
You'll have some, okay.
So, you know, I've spent a lot of time thinking about, thinking about this and what we're doing and how we're doing it, why we're doing it. When I say a lot of time, it's not, it's not nights, it's years, you know? I would say on the collaboration, I honestly don't know what more we could do to be collaborative at this point. I really don't. I mean, and this is not to say that others are not being collaborative as well, but to suggest that we're not collaborative is ludicrous. So, you know, I, sometimes I sit back and I say, well, how did, how did we get to where we're at right now? What brought this town to where it is? And quite frankly, if I'm being overly honest with it, I think like the town, I think the town's lost its way a little bit. You know, we, we no longer question anything. We don't ask hard questions, and when we do, we kinda get shabbied out from rooftops. I don't understand that. You know, there was a comment made that the budget that we presented was, wasn't within the, I can't remember the exact word, the scope or the, it wasn't, didn't fit neatly into the box that they wanted to fit in. That's not how a budget process should work, in my opinion. I honestly, I think we do it the right way. We determine what our needs are, we present that budget, and then as a town, we should ask, what are our priorities? Is it A or is it B? Is it C or is it D? We don't do that anymore as a town. We have a budget presented to us, and we say, yep, rubber stamp, let's vote for it. And if someone does get up and say, well, why are we paying that? Everybody looks at them like they're crazy. Quite honestly, listen, as a citizen of this town, it's my right to ask that. As a member of an elected board, it's my responsibility to. And every single person in this town should be doing that. We should, we should take days on the budget. We shouldn't blow through it in half an hour. The fact that we went to a second night this time, I thought was honestly a little bit of credit to our town. Finally, people are starting to ask questions. Why aren't we asking more? And it's not a bad thing, it's not a personal attack. I keep hearing people say it's a personal attack. I don't think they understand what the definition of a personal attack is. No one's saying someone's a bad person and they kicked their dog. It's simply, hey, you need to look at this. You need to professionally say, is this number more important than that number? That's your responsibility. It's our responsibility, it's Board of Selectmen's responsibility, it's the superintendent's responsibility, it's the town manager's responsibility. Every single one of these people has this responsibility. And as townsfolk, as citizens, we have the responsibility to go to these town meetings and ask these questions. And quite frankly, over the years, we've abdicated that right. We've given it up. We've stopped asking questions. The town manager presented a budget, the PINCOM agreed 100% to the penny. I don't understand how that happens. And this is not a condemnation of any of those people, and it's not a personal attack against any of those people, so please don't write, don't call. I don't want to hear. This is, this is simply saying that we're not asking questions anymore, and I just simply don't understand that. And I know that we kept hearing, the school's gotta raise, the school's gotta raise. I don't understand that either. Either people are woefully ignorant of how a school budget works, or they're not being honest when they make that statement. One of those two things has to be true. They cannot both be false. So, if you understand both of those things, you understand, all right, either they're not getting a raise, or you're saying they're not getting a raise, and we know it's not true, well, where does that leave us? What does that say to me? You can't sit here and equate a school budget with a town budget. They're just not the same beast. They're simply not. We fall under different guidelines, we have different mandates. You can't expect to look at them both and say, okay, it's gonna be 2.8%, 2.7%, and that's that. We shouldn't do that. We should look at it and say, okay, what is this, what's the budget comprised of? What's in there? What are their needs? Why do they have those needs? Are they legitimate needs? Are they not legitimate needs? These are questions every single person in this room, maybe some person in this town should be asking constantly. We don't do that anymore, I just don't understand that. We've lost our way, and that's why we're where we're at today. People don't ask questions anymore.
Well, I think the biggest point to that too is, if you look at the special ed mandates, I don't think that people realize what that price tag was and what it caused us when it's not supported, because that's really what it is. It wasn't supported.
There's anger, there's anger that we don't present a budget that fits into this neat little percentage. The problem is, is we can't pretend we don't have those mandates. You can't say, well, we just won't pay them. It doesn't work that way. Our budget by default is out of the spectrum of where he wants it to be. What do we do? What's the option? Refuse to educate special ed? It doesn't work that way. It doesn't work. I don't understand how this isn't getting through to people. I don't understand anymore what we're supposed to do. I'm at a loss. I mean, it's, you know, we have teachers come here telling us that the morale's down. Yeah, I get it, morale's down up here too. I mean, I don't know, at this point, I don't know how to convey the message anymore. I don't.
Well, there've been years when we've been lucky per se for special ed that we haven't gotten it. This year, we got slammed, and like you say, we can't say, sorry, we don't have the money, we have to go somewhere else. We have to pay it, period. And when special ed goes up and it's not in the budget ahead of time, it comes out of gen ed. That's the way it works. It's not fair, it's not right, but that's the way it works.
Yeah. Anything else? Questions, comments, concerns?
I just think it's really, really important to do two things. Everything that, from Laura to other folks, you folks here tonight that have spoken about this, it's, I think it's really, really important to step back for a second and recognize the gem that we are and that we have. The comments about the middle school earlier and the arts, the students that we presented tonight to you, the middle schoolers that are coming the next year. And last year, when we got wowed because of an override that lost by even more votes than one that was bigger the year before, we made a commitment at this table, privately and publicly, to be quite honest, that we were gonna worry about non-public schools, that we were gonna worry about non-public schools, and that everything else was, it is what it is. I think that it's really important to take the comment about morale. I think I addressed some of that in my newsletter this past Friday, where I talked about how many of us have looked and said, why are we doing this? Why do we continue to be in a field in a community that makes you think about, why am I doing this? And if you have an out, some people are choosing to take their out, their out, for whatever reason it may be. And I think we have to refocus on all of the good things that we do. And Dan, you mentioned this all the time to me, and how do we get this information to the taxpayer? How do we find a way to get this information to the taxpayer? There are gonna be people who won't listen, but I think there's a lot of people that just don't have the facts. And we can tweet out as much as we want, we can social media on Facebook as much as we want, where, you know, that chatter in itself is a disaster. Or we can actually do what every other school around us is doing. You look at the VOK, you look at the AGI, you look at the Charter School, our biggest three competitions, you look at Fian, the private school in the area, you look at Severian, you look at CM, any of them. And the only approach that they have is that before the public information becomes public, if you will, there's already a pledge release ready to go. There's already a piece of information that's published. You know, I worked in conjunction with Framingham Public Schools in announcing that he was leaving. They had quotes and pictures and everything ready to go before I was even done with my opening statement, right? But they had a concerted effort on, we are about to make a big splash and tell everybody how, sorry Norton, but he's coming to us, I don't want you to feel bad.
I'll cry later.
Right. Ted's situation, the same thing. You know, hey, can you stop by the office, take a picture? And there was, we've gotta get, I believe, information, facts to the taxpayers. I always think about my parents, my own, my old man himself. You've got to spend money to make money. And I don't know what that means. You've got to spend money to make money, and I don't know what that means. I don't want to be cutting the teaching position to hiring somebody who can maybe send a better message about our budget. I already told Dinesh this the other day. I will ask the school committee next year that our line item budget be presented to the town meeting. I don't want just the bottom number. I want the line item. Question my salary, question my expenses, question hers, his, question that Mary Jo makes too much money, I don't give a darn. Give them the information, so they have the facts. Give them the information about that we have X number of kids that cost us $125,000 or more a year. Give them the information, not individually, of course, I would never harm a child, but give them the information, but also request that that be done by all departments and publish a town meeting line item budget for all of us, all of us. I mean, it's interesting that our town report publishes people's yearly salaries. That's great, okay? You can pretty much get that anywhere. Why is that like the most important part of what your expenses are? Everybody knows that almost every part of this town and almost every community is salaries and benefits. It's the beast that we're in. But this beast ate its own to save its own. We ate our own to save our own. We didn't ask for it to come from another department. So, we got creative. Right? I got people that are worried about next year, right? And my job is to try to say to them, let's not worry about next year, let's worry about September. Let's get through the end of this year, and let's get this to September, and then let's worry about all the comments that Laura just made about, how do we make sure that a bunch of these new teachers are being supported? What creative idea can we come up with that creates ABC? And I don't have one tonight, I really don't. All I know is that as people leave, that number creates the problem of how do we support new people? Even if they're experienced new people, our culture and demands are going to be different, higher, better. We have to support them. So, my goal, and to the people that are here and to the people that are out there that have received their slips, is to say, I love your phrase, we're not done yet, right? We're going to, if we save $10,000 here and $5,000 here on a resignation and $20,000 here, I'm going to communicate with you like I do every summer and say, I'm going to, we've